Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 28, 2015 Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment. And Lynn, would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indiscernible of liberty and justice for all.
And before we go any further, my error, I should introduce Lynn Christensen as our new full-time member. Welcome, Lynn. Lenny, would you sit in for Tony?
Patrick.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the benefit of those who have not attended the hearings, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order that they are posted in the legal notice. However, the chairman may change the order with the consent of the board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. We allow each petitioner to state why his or her petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any abutter or interested party is allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting all the facts, we will go around a second time. The board may elicit testimony at any point, but we cannot allow cross-discussion. All questions must be directed to the board. Also, we ask that you do not repeat yourself or your neighbor's testimony. If you wish to indicate concurrence, please do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition before moving on to the next. The zoning board is empowered to legalize the breaking of the town zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinances are set out, are set out the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant your petition. I remind you that it is your responsibility to prove your case so that this board has justification for granting the petition. The minimum requirements are listed in the form you receive from the Community Development Office, and it will be helpful if you would proceed on this basis. Please turn off all cell phones. And those who are going to be speaking tonight, if you're testifying for, against, or for any petitions, please rise to be sworn in. So no one else is talking. If you're gonna say anything tonight in front of the board, you need to stand right now. Raise your right hand. Right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sure you're all set? All right, the first petitioner is NH1 Motorplex LLC petitioner and Apple Development Limited owner requesting a special exception under Section 2.02.3(c)(1)E of the zoning ordinance to permit an indoor racetrack using electric racing cars with supporting administrative/function rooms as a commercial recreational use located at the former Shaw's supermarket and CVS stores. The parcel is located at 360 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts, tax map 4D-3, lot 001, in its case 2015-1. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm attorney with Prunier and Pearlman.
You've got it. It's the mic. No, push the light, push the bar. Got it? And also if you would sign in?
Sure. Madam Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney in Nashville with Prunier and Pearlman here on behalf of your applicant, NH1 Motorplex Limited Liability Company. If you'll give me one sec, I'll sign in. With me tonight are the owners of NH1 Motorplex, sitting behind me and part of our team, Dan Jennison and Derek Doucette, who can answer any questions, should the board have any questions. Madam Chair, you have our application.
Excuse me a moment. If we have any questions, they're gonna have to be sworn in. Were you sworn in, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and if you could, what we've started doing is your points of law here that you filled out, if you can start with that, and then we're gonna stop after each one and ask if we have any questions, we'll ask you. And then you can go over to the whole coverage of everything. How's that?
Sounds good.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have our overview that came with our application. We are trying to renovate the Shaw's and the CVS, which has been long dormant. We believe this development for this cart racing, taking up this approximately 40,000 square feet of long dormant space, will help with the overall community development. It'll bring back to life this plaza that's been idle now for some years. We think that it would be helpful to the town with your community development in this regard.
Okay, go ahead.
The indoor electric cart, state-of-the-art carts, these are not the old-fashioned gasoline go-karts that we may remember as kids or that are over at the Mel's T-Off in Litchfield. These are electric carts, safe batteries, no noise, no fumes, no odors coming out of the facility. We have been in touch with the neighbors to the immediate south, the East Ridge condos, and they have not expressed any concerns. So we believe that we would not be adversely affecting the neighborhood. Besides the East Ridge condos, we're commercial all around us.
Go ahead.
The, you folks know the area better than I do, but I would, I think it's safe to say that there's little, if any, pedestrian traffic that makes its way to this facility. The vehicular traffic, we'll be using the, I guess, the southbound right turn only at the northern end of the plaza, but primarily the intersection at the traffic light, which has the turning lanes in both directions. This site was designed for the supermarket and the CVS. We're gonna, our use is gonna be far under capacity for that.
You're talking about the southern entrance and exit?
Yeah, I just noticed tonight, there's a northern entrance, which is a right turn only, and then the southern entrance is at the light.
Right.
And our use is gonna be far under capacity, what was originally designed for the Shaw's and the CVS. So we don't think we have any pedestrian or vehicular issues, any traffic or safety issues in this regard as well.
All right, questions? Go ahead.
Finally, Madam Chair, the facility, we have some pictures of a sample facility. This will be state-of-the-art, it'll meet all the building codes. We will be working with the fire department and the police department to make sure the build-out of this site, you know, will meet all of Merrimack's concerns. So we don't, we believe we're gonna be providing the proper operation for the proposed use. And our folks are very excited to see this come to life.
Everyone all set? Did you bring any overviews, et cetera?
Sure, you bet.
No, excuse me, sir. We don't take any paperwork the night of the meeting.
Anything else you wanted to discuss?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, if you wanna hold it up to us, we'd just take a glance like that, but we're not, we don't accept any type of paperwork.
Okay, well, my apologies. I indicated in our, in our application that we would have additional information, but that's okay. Just to kind of briefly go over what we are proposing, the carts themselves are made in Italy, the state-of-the-art. They're controlled by the driver, but before the driver really takes over control of the carts, they are remotely controlled to allow the starter to get the carts up to speed and make sure everyone understands the safety rules before the carts are really let go on the track. The batteries, sometimes there are concerns about these batteries. These are deep-cycle marine batteries. There'll be some extra batteries, but they'll be kept in a fire-rated safety area and a mechanical area. There'll be safety rules that the staff goes over before anyone gets into a cart. These facilities are very safe. These facilities are located around the country, and there's not been much of any indication of any safety concerns. These are not bumping type of bumper cars or go-cars that you see elsewhere. They're spread out, and racers are timed against themselves, are timed against their friends, not racing to the finish line. The hours are typical hours for what you would see for recreational use like this. 11 to 10 during weekdays, Fridays and Saturdays would be 11 to 11, 11 to 8 on Sundays. There's a strict no alcohol policy at this. We are not drinking and driving, even though it's indoor carts. There will be vending machines and soft, for soft drinks and snacks for folks. The, a big use of this site is for private parties, corporate events, fundraising events, which would be in the function rooms. And those folks may have, may bring in a caterer to do that, but again, subject to the no alcohol policy, but that's a large use of these facilities. The, the use of the site, once it's up and running, will have typical small business deliveries, Staples, FedEx trucks will come from time to time. Nothing unusual for, you know, what you see for any small business, so. The, well, just to, just to give you a sense, if you can see this, there are, you can see the carts themselves. The carts themselves are stationary for most of the time. They have charging stations where they are situated for most of the day. There are eight carts per race, so there will be a slot of cars going out at any one time while the remainder of the carts will be, will be charging. The plan is to buy 32 carts to start so that you have eight carts racing and the other carts charging the whole time. So the goal is to, you know, hopefully open this site sometime this summer and fall. And working with staff, you know, you saw the staff recommendation, and they've worked with the planning chair such that they've addressed the parking issues and they would be ready to assist with the processing of the plan, should this board so approve the special exception.
Any questions at all? Lynn? No questions? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify for the go-karts? Anyone who'd like to testify against the go-karts? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and could I, any other further discussion from the board?
I don't have any further discussion other than the fact that I'm glad to see that that space is actually gonna be used, which I'm sure a lot of people in Merrimack do. So I'd like to actually make a motion to approve NH1 Motorplex LLC petitioner and Apple Development LTD owner special exception under Section 2.02.3(c)(1)E of the zoning ordinance to permit an indoor racetrack using electric racing cars with supporting administrative/function rooms as a commercial recreational use located at the former Shaw's supermarket and CVS stores. The parcel is located at 360 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts, tax map 4D-3, lot 001, case number 2015-01. With the staff recommendation that administrative approval for the change of use retail to commercial recreation shall be required from the Community Development Department prior to the issuance of any building permits for this project.
Do I have a second? Lenny? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? 4-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. I'm glad to see you coming to town.
I bet a lot of people are, so thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you.
Have a good night.
Donna, I apologize. You have an item there?
That's okay. I was just gonna announce for the public and the board that the telephone tower that was proposed from AT&amp;T on Joppa Road has been withdrawn, so you won't be seeing that again.
All right, I have one question, so we can clarify it. Are they going to another location in town, or are they going to somewhere else?
We haven't heard anything. They just asked for it to be withdrawn, so we haven't seen any other proposals for in town. Correct.
Well, that shot clock was up, we were all set with that anyway. Okay, the next item is Eugene C. Ordway, petitioner owner, requesting a variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit three lots with less than the required minimum lot area. The parcels are located at 28, 28A and 28B Shore Drive in the R-2 Residential and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, tax map 6A2, lots 14, 15, and 16, case 2015-02. And would you sign in, please? And also, I forgot to mention what the, the first petition is. We only have a board of four, so if it's a two to two, two for and two against, you will, you will lose your, petition will be automatically denied. Do you still wanna go ahead with it?
Yes.
All right, you have typed up a, the five points of law. Would you start off with that and stop after each one? And if there's any questions, we'll ask you right there. Okay? Hit the button there for your, it's gonna get bright green.
Bright green. 28 Gene Ordway at 28A Shore Drive in Merrimack.
And I'm Melissa Ordway, 28B Shore Drive in Merrimack.
Reading the questions. Granting, question number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it is in the public interest that residential building lots are of sufficient size to support the health and safety needs of the occupants and neighbors and do not harm the environment. This is accomplished among other means by requiring lot sizes to be large enough to ensure adequate water supply and effluent processing. The lots of the two properties that lose square footage, lots 14 and 15, are still adequate for the structures mounted thereon. The lots are easily large enough and do support septic tanks, and in the case of lot 15, 28 Shore Drive, has its own leach field and is served by town water. Lots 16, 28A Shore Drive, and 14 at 28B Shore Drive are both served by town water, have their own septic tanks, but do share a common state-approved leach field. A condition imposed by the planning board requires that the owners of lots 16 and 14 establish a common and legal easement outlining the mutual responsibility of the two owners relative to the maintenance and upkeep of the common leach field. It would be one thing if lots 14, 15, and 16 were the only non-conforming lots in a sea of conforming lots. However, lots 14, 15, and 16 are three of nearly 300 lots in the Pinola Estates development, each of which is non-conforming to current zoning requirements. There are numerous lots in this development established in 1927 that are as little as 50 by 100 feet, 5,000 square feet. Granting this variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the three lots involved are absolutely in conformance with the standards of the neighborhood in which they are located.
All right, does anyone have any questions? All right, go ahead.
Question two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the spirit of the zoning ordinances is to provide the necessary rules and regulations to allow the community as a whole to live in interrelated and intrinsic harmony. This is accomplished by codifying the major aspects of a community's social and physical infrastructures. A resident must provide support and comfort to its occupants and mesh seamlessly with its neighbors, neither physically harming them nor offending any of their senses. Conflicts with this harmony must be controlled, if not eliminated. The spirit of the Merrimack zoning ordinances will be maintained if this variance is granted in that the community will not be harmed, no standard will be lowered, no neighbor will be impacted, and much good will be accrued to the owners of the properties affected.
Questions? Lynn? All right, go ahead.
Question number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because creation of lot A. Eugene Ordway and/or the tenants of 28 Shore Drive have used the steps and stairs located between lots 16 and 14 for 39 years under the assumption that they were located on Eugene Ordway's property. Scott and Melissa Ordway, owners of lot 14, also assumed the steps and stairs were on Eugene Ordway's property. A survey has proven these assumptions to be wrong. Eugene Ordway has two options. One, moving the lot line between lots 16 and 14 with the permission of Scott and Melissa Ordway and of the ZBA so that the steps and stairs to the lake are on Eugene Ordway's property. Or the second option, if a variance is denied, build a parallel system of steps and stairs to the lake on what is currently Eugene Ordway's property. This new set of stairs would run next to and as close to as within two feet of the existing steps and stairs. Granting this variance presents an opportunity to set things right. Grant the movement of the property line so that Eugene Ordway does own the steps and stairs to the lake that he built and has maintained for 39 years and which he could have acquired through adverse possession many years ago if he had thought it was necessary, as he owned lot 14 until selling it to his son and daughter-in-law 12 years ago. Moving official ownership of these steps and stairs to Eugene Ordway creates no hardship for Scott and Melissa Ordway as they already have their own steps and stairs leading to the lake located more conveniently to their residence. Then creation of lot B.
Okay, wait just a moment. Is there any questions before, before you go on to the next? Go ahead, Lynn.
I have two questions. There were some photos that were provided here. One of them is the stairway located on lot 14 used by the tenants. It states in there that those steps are in need of repair.
Yes, they are.
So whether they're repaired or they're moved two feet, you need to do the work to them, one way or the other.
I'll, I'll actually speak to that. That's on our property. They're in disrepair because of lake damage last winter. We had them removed just two months ago in order to do refinancing of our house. They would not grant it without the removal of those stairs because they were dangerous. They are not on-
Are these the ones that are gonna stay on your property?
They will be replaced in the spring with new stairs.
But they're the ones that are gonna stay on your property?
That's correct.
Not the ones that are being moved to your father's property?
That is correct, yes.
Question number two, you're stating, no, I'm gonna hold off on that one. Looking at the layout that you've provided, the, this layout, it appears that there are a set of steps already. I'm, I'm looking at three set of steps. One on Melissa's property, one that's in debate that we're trying to move.
Yes.
And there's a third set that's already on your property?
That's correct. That, that is for my personal use, the ones on my property currently, they go directly from my house to the lake.
Yep.
The steps in question that I would like to gain ownership of are actually used by the tenant that live in 28 Shore Drive, lot 15, my tenants. And I use it, I use it occasionally myself to pull piers, do things such as that, but...
But there is no easement that allows those tenants to use those steps currently? Is that correct?
Correct, there's verbal agreement.
So for instance, if you sold your property, whoever bought it could say to the tenants, you can't use those steps?
Could say, could do that.
Okay.
You all set? All right, go ahead. Creation of lot B?
Creation of lot B. The survey also showed that half of the property used by Scott and Melissa Ordway for vehicular parking is actually on lot 15 property, which is owned by Eugene Ordway. Prior to the survey, all concerned assumed the parking area used by Scott and Melissa was a part of the lot 14 property. Due to the lay of the land, there is no alternate parking site or sites on their property. The only alternative is to park on the public access, which interferes with access to the lake by the public. The public in this case are lot owners of Pinola Estates. Also, Scott Ordway is, is disabled and requires special constructed access to his home. Parking on the public access, which may not even be legal, would make the approach to his front door even more difficult than it is today. Lastly, during the rainstorm, during rainstorms, lot 14 is subject to intense sand-filled runoff from Merrimack Road, a dirt road. Transferring lot B to Scott and Melissa Ordway would allow them to do some aggressive paving, creating berms to deflect the runoff from their home. Unfortunately, the runoff continues on, onto the lake, contributing to its utrification, but at least it won't pass through their basement on the way to the lake. Granting a variance for the new lot B also presents an opportunity to set things right. Grant this variance so that the parking area always assumed to belong to the owners of lot 14 does in fact belong to Scott and Melissa Ordway. lot fourteen does in fact belong to Scott and Melissa Ordway.
Question on creating the berms. You say creating these berms obviously doesn't protect the water from running to the lake, protects your house, but is this going to create any runoff to adjacent homes?
It does not create runoff to adjacent homes. It's protected our home from excessive runoff, which we have years of photos of sand damage, water damage, which we just had to have replaced in the last six months.
So if it's not going through your home, where is the water going to go?
Through the public access.
Okay.
Any questions? Patrick? Okay. All right, number four.
Question number four, "For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished." State the reasons. The movement of the lines associated with the creation of the new lots A and B are relevant only to the owners of lot fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, are immaterial to abutters on either side who are shielded by two public access roads, and no property line associated with lots fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen intersect any other privately-held property. Since there is no impact on surrounding property owners nor the public at large, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished.
Patrick? Okay, Lynn? All right, go ahead, sir. Number five.
Number five, "Unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provision to the property because lot fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are lost in a sea of non-conforming lots, part of the Pinola State development. Moving the lot lines as requested herein creates no impact on any abutter nor none of the owner of the almost three hundred lots in the development. The line movement becomes invisible when viewed in context of the entire development." Creation of lot A. Denying the request creates a hardship for both parties in that for Eugene Ordway, he will have to build new steps and stairs for his tenants living at twenty-eight Shore Drive, lot fifteen. These new steps and stairs would be essentially only a few feet removed from the existing steps and stairs. For creation of lot B, as to Scott and Melissa, they will be burdened by knowing that though they have Eugene Ordway's permission to continue to park on Eugene Ordway's property, permission can easily be rescinded if there is a change in ownership. Then where to park a second vehicle becomes a real issue. The proposed... Number two, the proposed...
Very...
Okay, yes.
I just have a question here. You referred to tenants.
Yes.
Are those rentals?
Yes.
And the tenants live in whose home?
Lot fifteen, a private...
A private, nothing that you own at all?
Yes, I own it.
You own it?
I own it, yes. That's why I am in a position to donate property belonging to lot fifteen to Melissa and Scott to add to their parking area. So there are three residences involved, lot fifteen, lot sixteen, and lot fourteen. I own fifteen and sixteen. Fifteen is twenty-eight Shore Drive, sixteen is twenty-eight A Shore Drive, Melissa lives in twenty-eight B Shore Drive, lot fourteen.
Okay, that was my question is because you kept referring to tenants, and I didn't know if that was privately owned.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be easier just to move, if you own it, just to move it over? Or is this something that you want in...
Well, the stairs, I think you're referring to the stairs. The stairs are on my property. The tenants in lot fifteen, twenty-eight Shore Drive, don't have direct access to the lake. They will have to pass through my property to get to the lake, and I have provided them steps and stairs over the years to get to the water. And I provide them a pier for their boats and swimming and fishing.
True. But the steps currently are on Scott and Melissa's property that the tenants use?
Correct.
And that's what you're trying to remedy, is to move the line so that the steps become part of Eugene's property?
Yes.
Correct.
On this map, lot A shows that the existing steps and stairs to the water actually are on lot fourteen, belong to Scott and Melissa. And I want to pivot the line just a little bit to pick up so that steps and stairs will be on my property.
So you don't want the tenants to be using Melissa's steps? Is that correct?
I would prefer they don't.
Correct, and we would prefer to park on our own property, which is why we're asking for this, because my husband's disabled. The public access is very steep, and parking in it, which we don't think is legal, would cause a problem for him to actually get to the house. And by expanding that and allowing us to assume this property on lot fifteen would allow us to make our property whole and allow him to go through the stairs that we've provided disabled access for him.
So, John, just curious, is this just... I need glasses, but this... So your parking is like right there, right towards the bottom? If you're looking at the map, the bottom right-hand side, your parking is over there, I take it?
So you can, if you look at the established shed marker?
Yes.
Okay, our parking is to the left of that, and almost half of the parking is on lot fifteen.
Okay.
And then the rest is on lot fourteen. And then you see a little bump out down there that we've paved for public access to avoid the water runoff from Merriam Road and the sand runoff.
Yeah.
To go into the public access instead of through our property.
Okay.
You'll be able to see the line separation. By adding that additional footage to our parking area, that'll allow my husband to be able to access the house through his disability.
So you're parking on the... If I'm looking at it and here's the shed, you're parking on the left-hand side of the shed?
He parks on the left-hand side immediate to the shed.
Gotcha.
And I park on the right-hand side, allowing him to get to the house.
Okay. And you're looking to take... Okay. Now, is that shed on your property or on fifteen's?
It is on fifteen's.
It's on fifteen's?
And remains on fifteen's, yes.
Okay.
You have anything else?
No, I was just trying to read this here.
Lynn, are you all set?
Is... Not for nothing, but I mean, there also looks like the property line of fifteen goes through a deck that's on their property and your property? Is that something you're looking to get resolved as well?
Well, that came as a surprise. There's a lot of surprises in that survey.
Yeah.
There were.
It turned out that...
I mean, it's something you have to answer. I just was curious as to, you know, you're looking to get this bump out, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, why not, if we're looking to re... If you're looking to redraw the line, so to speak, on the property, I mean, yeah, I wouldn't know why you wouldn't have put that in the petition as well because, I mean, again, change of ownership, someone else goes to buy that house, and there's a deck that's not on their property, it could be, just curious.
You have a very good point. I've been concerned about that because somebody could say, "Tear that deck out because it's on..."
Well, that and the side of the house is probably well within the allowable footage to property setbacks and stuff like that, so it's, I mean, you know, I know that has nothing to do with this particular petition, but that might be something to think about if you're looking to redraw plot lines down the road to something to take a look at as well, because that could run into an issue when you, when or if you should try to move the property.
You're painfully correct. That is going to be an issue in the future.
And that's why I was asking the question about the shed and where all that was, because I was trying to, I was just trying to gauge where everything was lining up here, so... But thank you.
And you've covered creation of lot A and lot B, correct?
I'm sorry.
You've already covered the creation of lot A and B.
We're, with your approval, we will create a lot A and lot B, and I will pick up the ownership of lot A, and she will pick up lot B, if I understand your question correctly.
I think she's talking about where we're at in the...
That's what I'm asking you.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was not a question.
The second part of number five, number two.
Excuse me, I misunderstood. Okay. We're ready to pick up number two, I believe. The proposed use is reasonable one...
Yes.
One because, "The proposed use is a reasonable one because..." Creation of lot A. The vast majority, if not all waterfront lot owners on Babusik Lake have steps and stairs leading to the waterfront. Granting this waiver will allow the owners of lot sixteen to continue this common practice and to allow the tenants of lot fifteen, the tenants of lot fifteen, private and unconstrained access to the lake and dock provided by Eugene Ordway. Creation of lot B. Parking for two cars is a reasonable expectation for the owner of any residence. Granting this waiver will ensure that Scott and Melissa Ordway will not have to depend on the kindness of neighbors for them to continue to park a second vehicle.
Okay. Now, any final questions or comments? Lenny?
Yeah, point of clarification. On our staff memo, it says that the properties are serviced by private well and septic, but under item one, it states that it's serviced by town water. I just want a clarification.
Clarification is it is serviced by town water as of about three years ago.
All three of the properties are serviced by municipal water.
That's correct. As of two thousand and nine, after the ice storms of two thousand and eight, we invested to have town water run because we went pretty much eleven days without water, electricity, heat, et cetera. So we invested to have that water run down around the two thousand and nine timeframe.
That's fine. Thank you.
And you're not moving the dock that's on your property?
We are not. We will replace the dock we just had removed because of damage.
Right, so this whole thing is gone that's on the drawing here then?
So you actually don't see our dock because it has been removed.
Okay.
What you're seeing is the dock that's on our property that actually is used by the tenants.
Okay.
And then you see the stairs in the dock that is on twenty-eight A's property, which is lot sixteen.
So what are the steps in the middle? Is that, that was the third step? That was what I missed?
The steps are the ones that go to the dock that they removed.
Ah, gotcha.
Correct, yes.
I have any other questions?
Okay, any further questions or comments from the board?
This still does not give unconstrained access to lot fifteen because there is no easement or written thing in the deed. All you're doing is something for their convenience, but that can go away if there's a transfer of property or if you change your mind.
That's true.
So it's not unconstrained?
At my convenience, it's unrestrained. But I've been doing it for forty years almost, so I'm probably not going to change my mind.
Okay, anything further from the board? Hey, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to testify in favor of this variance? Anyone who'd like to testify against the variance? I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
I just wanted to point out something. I kind of have to agree with Lynn on the unconstrained access. I mean, that would be something, that would be wording that I would almost have to... I understand you wouldn't take it out, and it's been in there for forty years, but you've allowed it. But I mean, it does, you know, begs the point along with the lot line that's kind of on the deck in the house that needs to be addressed. That, to say unconstrained access, that could change. It hasn't, and it probably won't, but I'm just saying that it's certainly, I don't... Again, me just personally, I don't know if I'm just comfortable going with that, but I guess that would be something to address when you look at that other lot line that needs to be addressed that is going through the deck on lot fifteen. Just food for thought on that, so.
Out of curiosity, when was that deck built?
I'm sorry?
When was the deck built?
The deck was built, there was a... The deck was rebuilt about twenty years ago, the existing deck. There was, there's always been a deck there of some sort when I bought it, and I had it rebuilt about twenty years ago.
The one on lot fifteen?
I'm sorry?
The one on lot fifteen?
Yes.
Do you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Eugene C. Ordway, petitioner-owner, variance under section three point zero-two of the zoning ordinance to permit three lots with less than the required minimum lot area. The parcels are located at twenty-eight, twenty-eight A and twenty-eight B Shore Drive in the R2 Residential and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, tax map six A dash two, lots zero-one-four, zero-one-five, and zero-one-six, case number two thousand and fifteen dash zero-two, nothing from staff.
All right, all in favor of the... I'm sorry, yes, second? Lenny? Okay. All in favor of the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Four, zero, zero.
You guys can stay put because you're up again.
Don't move, we now have a captive audience. All right, the next item on the agenda is Eugene C. Ordway, petitioner-owner, requesting a variance under section three point zero-two of the zoning ordinance to permit three lots with less than the required minimum frontage. The parcels are located at twenty-eight, twenty-eight A and twenty-eight B Shore Drive in the R2 Residential and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, tax map six A dash two, lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, case number two thousand and fifteen dash three. And again, can I ask you to read your...
Yes, I'll be reading.
Are you going to do it, Melissa?
I will, yes. We'll give Gina a break.
Okay.
So question one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because a variance is requested from the frontage requirements of the zoning and building codes. Lot fifteen fronts Shore Drive but has no frontage dimension as the property intersects Shore Drive at a point. Lot sixteen and fourteen have no frontage on Shore Drive. However, there are public access roads on either side of lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. These roads, fifteen feet in width, extend from Shore Drive basically to the high-water mark of Babusik Lake. These two public access roads are approximately two hundred and forty feet in length. They are not town roads, but neither are they private property. See the State of New Hampshire Superior Court ruling and decree number zero-five-nine, Charles F. Morrell versus Lionel S. Carl, dated January term nineteen seventy-four. These access roads, in the opinion of us, serve the same purpose of, as frontage as described in the zoning and board building codes, thereby meeting the interests the public has in ensuring... has in ensuring every habitable property has sufficient frontage. And we'll defer you to the, the map which shows the pointage from the survey map.
Questions?
So that is how, the yellow house is fifteen?
That is correct.
Okay, that's the renters or whoever, that's, that, that's the renters' house?
Tenants.
It's the tenants' house.
Sorry. Okay, now, okay, all right, thanks.
Lynn? All right, number two?
Okay. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because it is not physically possible for lots fourteen and sixteen to have any frontage as they do not intersect shore drive. The one property intersecting shore drive, lot fifteen, does so at a point. Public access roads running from shore drive to the high water marks of Babusik Lake serve all three properties as an act of frontage in the spirit of the zoning regulations.
Questions? All right, number three?
Granting the variance would do so substantially, would do substantial justice because the lack of the frontage required by zoning regulations is not considered relevant to the variances requested by the owners of lot fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. If frontage is not relative to the movement of interior boundaries as requested by the applicants, it would be an injustice to deny variances for this reason, but see the response offered in question one.
Lynn?
Melissa, are these all three original lots from Pine Knoll Shores?
They are.
All right, and number four?
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. State the reasons. The lack of conventional frontage and the movement of the lines associated with creation of the new lots A and B are relevant only to the owners of lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are immaterial to abutters on either side who are shielded by two public access roads, and no property lines associated with lot fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen intersect any other privately held property. Since there is no impact on surrounding property owners nor the public at large, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished.
All right, number five?
Okay, we'll talk about unnecessary hardship on A. Owing to special conditions of the property that diminish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, number one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application that provisioned to the property because lot fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are lost in a sea of non-conforming lots that are part of the Pine Knoll Estate development. Moving the lot lines as requested herein creates no impact on any other abutter nor none, none on any owner or almost three hundred lots in this development. The line movements become invisible when viewed in context of the entire development. In the creations of lot A and B, lot A, denying the request creates a hardship for Eugene Ordway in that order for his tenant to, living at twenty-eight shore drive, lot fifteen, to have unfettered access to the lake, he will have to build new steps and stairs essentially a few feet removed from the existing stairs and steps. And in the creation of lot B, as to Scott and Melissa, they will be burdened by knowing that they, though they have Eugene C. Ordway's permission to continue to park on Eugene Ordway's property, permission can be easily rescinded if there is a change in ownership. Then where the park a second car becomes a real issue.
Any questions? Lynn? Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, number two, the proposed use is reasonable one because, the creation of lot A, the vast majority, if not all waterfront lot owners on Babusik Lake have steps and stairs leading to the waterfront. Granting this waiver will allow the owners of lot sixteen to continue this common practice and continue the long-held practice of allowing tenants of lot fifteen private and unconstrained access to the lake and dock provided by Gene Ordway. Creation of lot B, parking for two cars is a reasonable expectation for the owner of any residence. Granting this waiver will ensure that Scott and Melissa Ordway will have, will not have to depend on the kindness of neighbors for them to continue to park a second vehicle.
All right, any final questions or comments from the board? Lynn? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify for this variance? Anyone here who'd like to testify against the variance? All right, I'll close the public hearing, and do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Eugene C. Ordway, sorry, sir, petitioner owner, variance under section three point zero two of the zoning ordinance to permit three lots with less than the required minimum frontage. The parcels are located at twenty-eight, twenty-eight A and twenty-eight B shore drive in the R two residential and flood hazard district, conservation districts, tax map six A dash two, lots zero one four, zero one five, and zero one six, case number two thousand and fifteen dash zero three. Do I have a second?
Does somebody want a second?
There you go.
Okay, Lynn is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, you have thirty days for somebody to come back and appeal the decision. So if you proceed, well, obviously, there is no proceeding, you're not doing any building, so. You're all set.
Certain amount of time a year.
Yeah, so, good luck.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank all of you.
Have a good night.
And the next agenda item is Turn Cycle Solutions LLC, petitioner and Peter Wyman, owner, variance under section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-three by twelve enclosed porch twenty-eight feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required. The parcel is located at Three Dolly Road in the R residential and Aqua Forest Conservation Districts, tax map sixty dash one, lot one nineteen dash one, case number two thousand and fifteen dash four.
Need to be sworn in, miss?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't, sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. Sit down.
Uh, put your hand, I swear to tell the whole truth, not the truth, so help you God.
I swear to tell the whole truth.
I just, yeah, I do.
Thank you. I do. Amen.
Now, are you Peter Wyman?
Uh, no.
Lecter.
He's my wingman.
Okay.
Is he talking, or is he just?
Yeah, he's going to be talking.
Did you swear?
I did swear.
All right, we'll start off with the points of law that you filled out.
Yep.
And then you can go in the background and the reasoning behind it, all right?
So do you just want me to read it word for word?
Yeah, uh-huh, and then just stop after every number so we can ask any questions if need be.
Okay. So number one, granting a variance would not be contrary to the public interest, granting a variance would not be contrary to the public interest as it is a private dwelling, the proposed enclosed three-season room will enhance the use of the home as well as be consistent with the other improvements completed in the area.
Questions? All right, go ahead, number two?
So the spirit of the ordinance is absorbed because the proposed three-season room will improve the use of the home and enhance its value. Number three, granting a variance would do substantial justice because, as the scale drawings illustrate, the proposed three-season room would, one, enhance the value of the property, and two, enable the property owner to further enjoy their home and enhance their rear yard.
All right, go ahead.
Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The owner has made significant improvements to the home, new siding, new windows and doors, and all the improvements help to further enhance the property's appearance.
And number five?
No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because it is a legal, non-conforming lot. The lot is older and smaller, which creates the hardship of needing to fit the proposed three-season room within the setbacks. The proposed plan would not affect the public.
All right, any questions from the board?
So?
We forgot one. You've got the second part of number five, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
So the proposed use is a reasonable one because denial of a variance for the proposed three-season room would create a hardship for the owner by denying the use and reasonable enjoyment that would be achieved within the three-season room.
So there's a deck on the back of the house now. I couldn't see that before when I, when I went by the other day.
There's already a deck there. What we want to do, we just want to take down that deck because structurally it wouldn't support the roof, so we're just going to rebuild, but in the same exact footage.
So what, what's on there now? Is it, is this a twelve by sixteen deck on the back now?
Twelve, oh, sorry. There's a twelve by sixteen existing deck there that's, that's currently within the space that you'll see there. What we're calling for is to remove the existing deck from that location, provide the structural supports within the ground necessary to then build that three-season room, staying within the conform, the conforming deck space that's already pre-existing. And the plans that you have there in front of you are the exact, the exact format in which the, or the exact layout in which the deck is sitting now.
So based upon what you're looking to get for a variance, based upon the existing deck, it's not conforming right now?
Yeah, it's already non-conforming. Yeah, exactly right. So when this was built, there was, it didn't meet the conforming lots, they had gone for a variance den at that time, or there was some, you know, it's really, we had a really, really hard time tracking this throughout the process because the lots, whoever did the original construction, had mixed the lot numbers up so many times that there was, like, in my, our file for Three Dolly Way, we have lot like nine, eighteen, and twelve, or something like that.
Okay.
And so when that actually came through, it was very hard for us to track. We do have some verbiage here that we can provide to you if you need to.
No, I just, this was, I, I just, I mean, I just, no, and I understand what you're saying, and, and, you know, depending on how long ago it was built, I'm not surprised that something like that may have happened. I just, it, and the deck was built before you obviously moved in there by the sound of it?
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're representing the owner, but at the end of the day, so we're, yeah, it was built in seventy-six or something like that.
Okay.
What was the?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My apologies.
So in essence, you're just, you're just taking down an existing structure and you're putting something that's more stable up?
This, yeah, exactly right.
Same footprint?
Exactly right. The, the existing structure is not in perfect condition anyway, so as we started to look at it, we did all the siding, windows, we renovated the exterior of the building, essentially, and we started to look at the deck, and it structurally is fine for now, it has a usable life, it's nearing its term life at this point. So as a forward-looking process, we'd like to receive zoning so that we can make a three-season porch there.
Okay.
They have some functional obsolescence in the inside of their home that allows them not to have a really good dining kitchen area, so we'd like, they'd like to utilize this for that space.
And, and the deck or the porch that's out there now is just a summer one, correct?
Just a summer porch, yeah, they have a grill out there. They have a grill on the space right now and a couple patio chairs. It's just, it's a good space, but it's just not, you know, it's impeding them to.
To make a cozier space for them, yeah.
They need the room. So we'll follow all the building codes that are necessary, we've done plenty of work in Merrimack, and we'll take any other questions you have.
Any, anymore? You're good, Lenny? Lynn?
I've got a question on the size. You've got twelve by sixteen?
Yep.
What the town has is twelve by fourteen.
Have you come out and measure it with me if you want?
I'm just looking at the town plans and what was approved by the town.
Excuse me for just a moment.
Yep.
So the usable space, if, if you could look at this floor plan, please?
Yep.
If you look at that floor plan, in between that space, so what we're signifying where it says, new four-season room, or whatever you want to call it, those two blocks off the back of the house are more, where it says, where you, where we're calling for sixteen feet, that is actually sixteen feet. I don't know if when the original building was taken place, that they were taking into account a siding and other things that would be impeded into that space. I, I can't make that denomination, but I can tell you that measuring between these two spaces right here is like fifteen foot, eleven and a half.
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking at what the town has on record.
Yeah, no problem. I, I don't know if I need to do anything different on our end, but that's what it measures in between those two spaces. So that's why we're specing exactly replacing, we're literally just going to pick the existing structure off and put a new existing structure in for that.
Donna? Do we need to do anything different based on what we've got on record?
You mean for tonight or for correcting the town's record?
I, I'm just asking, there's a discrepancy that I'm questioning.
No, if it's, if it's just two feet on the agenda that was advertised versus tonight, that's not an issue.
So the town records will get corrected after they pull a permit?
Right.
Yeah, that's usually the way it works. If we pull a town, a building permit for something that's inaccurate previously built when we renovate, like we just did a load-bearing wall, and they had the opening at twelve feet, and it was really eleven feet, so they were getting, and then they just adjusted it when we.
The town has square footage of one six, of one sixty-eight, which is twelve by fourteen.
And I got fifteen, twelve. Yeah, so, I mean, this is the original one, when I measured it up, we just pulled that up, so.
I'm just questioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look into it and have the assessing department look into it.
I'm here to do whatever we need to make that work.
The other question I had is, and it is, so it's actually, it's a sixteen, it's not twelve by sixteen, but you're looking at twenty-three by twelve. So I take it there's an additional seven feet that you're looking at here?
Yes, so that walk-up, so that it doesn't have just three minimal steps that walk up into that three-season room.
Okay. Is that going to be a room? Is it?
No, nothing, it's just going to be a porch.
A porch, okay.
So the, the, where it says new deck area, it's seven by seven foot six?
Yeah.
That's just going to be, it's going to have three steps going up to it, it's going to have a seven-foot area, just for the homeowner to be able to put their shovels and their
Yeah, I get that.
grill and stuff like that outside that space. And that'll be a fire-rated door, and then we'll have two French doors going into the dome.
Okay.
This says construction of a twenty-three by twelve enclosed porch, so you are expanding the footprint of the current deck?
Nope, it's just the, the twenty-three came in from adding the extra seven because we're building the, the extra porch, so that's where the seven feet come in to make it twenty-three. The enclosed area is just going to be the twelve by sixteen.
Okay, then, then look, this should actually say twelve by sixteen, not twelve by twenty-three, enclosed porch.
When I brought it in, the, to review it, they said just to put the twenty-three because we're building a new porch and it wasn't already there, so it had to be the twelve by twenty-three, but only twelve by sixteen is going to be enclosed.
So the correct one should probably be more like twenty-three by twelve foot porch, you just happen to be enclosing sixteen feet of it.
Sixteen feet, twelve, yeah.
Semantics, but yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
As long as the record reflects that, I'm all right with it.
I agree.
Thank you.
And it's just to make sure that it's all, you know, just so we don't run into the whole, you know, plot play and stuff you guys have already run into.
I've been.
Make sure that's called clarified, so.
Lenny? Patrick?
Good.
Lynn?
Hold on a sec.
Hold on a sec. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is anyone here to testify for this variance on Dolly Road? Is there anyone who'd like to testify against it? Ma'am?
I would, I would.
All right, would you come up to the microphone, please? Ma'am, have you been sworn in?
Yes, she did.
You did, okay.
If you could sign in first.
All right, would you state your name and your address, please?
Yes, my name is Sandra Joel Phillips. I live at eleven Pine Street. And I am here to discuss the variance of the property applied for Three Dolly Road.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. I have written down a number of my concerns and questions. And I've written them, and I would like to just, if I could, just read it, I think it would make it easier if I did that, if you don't mind, it's only going to take like three or four minutes.
That's okay, just a quick question.
Surely.
Where are you?
I am the abutter to the rear of the home.
Okay, just wanted to get perspective, thank you.
Okay. I say, I have reviewed Mr. Wyman's application along with other submitted supporting documentation to support his request for approval of a variance to permit construction of a twenty-three-by-twelve three-season enclosed porch on the rear of his property. As the rear of his property abuts my home at eleven Pine Street directly in the rear, I would appreciate some answers to clarify the following. When I went to the town hall, I asked for supporting documentation. The document, two documents I got labeled, one was rear elevation, which is this one, I believe, this is the one that the gentleman was showing you, is that correct? That's one, and then there is this one, which is a first-floora plan. Neither of these documentation provides dimensions, okay, on their proposed building. That is, the dimension of the wall which will be facing my home, my property, nor does it give the dimension and the height of the windows that they are suggesting be put in. Now, this is all going to be facing my property, and I'm getting to my concern. My concern is my rear deck faces his deck, okay? In the pictures that you have, it doesn't show everything because things have changed through the years. There is a six-foot stockade fence dividing the properties. We both have storage buildings which sit on either side of this fencing, but neither are high nor wide enough to give either home occupants privacy. Erecting this three-season porch wall is going to further add to loss of privacy with three windows facing my rear deck. And the closeness of the wall becomes closer to my property. Right now, I can see his sliding glass door, which is, well, it's, I'll explain it further as I go along. I suggest, I would suggest that the design of that rear wall be changed to remove the two lower windows and place them on the side walls thereby giving both homes complete privacy. If this suggestion does not meet with your approval, I would ask that the variance request be denied. Mr. Wyman states in his application for variance that because this property is a legal, non-conforming lot and small, it creates a hardship of fitting his proposed three-season porch within the approved setback on the rear of his house. As I see it, the porch was given a setback variance when it was built many years ago, I believe it was nineteen eighty-two. And creation of a three-season porch now to fit within the setback is not a hardship, but it will affect my privacy if the variance is approved as submitted and resale value of my home could be impacted.
So, I understand your concerns, but from my understanding, from what was explained to us, is that the three-season porch is going to, well, I imagine it's going to be only one story, so there's going to be a second story to the three-season porch.
It's high, it's quite, this is why the dimensions, nothing is here, so you can't see the...
So, you're saying it's going to sit hi, just hold on one second, you're saying it's going to sit higher than...
I don't know, all I know is what is in existence, and this is supposed to be just something that's going to upgrade it to a three-season porch. So, but the current deck is probably as high as this.
Which is probably the same height as yours?
No, my deck is much lower, it's not much lower, but it is lower because it was put in so long ago, so...
All right, is this three-season going to be sitting on a slab? Okay, and how, how high are the pillars going to be?
They're going to be the exact same height as what we're showing here, so this is eight feet, so where this, well, what this is called a freeze board, so where this freeze board comes across this space, it's going to be at the same height as what the pre-existing deck is currently.
So, that is going to be higher than the six-foot stockade fence?
So, their pre-existing porch roughly, so that the, if you were to look at...
Is the floor of the new three-season porch going to, is the floor of the three-season porch going to be the same height as elevation as the current deck?
Yeah, so, when you're inside of the house, you have to step out, you have to open the siding on the door, you step down out onto their porch, that's going to be the same application, or the same exact...
So, same elevation?
Correct, same elevation, so there would be no impact from the existing height on which the deck is. Mr. Wyman was standing on his deck, looking straight past his yard, there would be no, there would be no difference in height of what it would be.
So, the only difference is that there's going to be, this is going to be enclosed, the porch is just going to be enclosed, that's the only difference.
Well, the wall now is going to be at the twelve-foot extension.
Correct.
Okay, it comes from the base, it comes from the foundation out.
Right, but that...
And that's closer to my home, so now they're going to have the wall with three windows.
But all the windows are one room?
Yes.
Yes, and that's, that's the section that's facing my, my home.
Okay.
If anything, it's actually...
And there's no dimensions, I don't even know how high it's going to go, I'm sorry.
It's going to be the same height as their deck right now?
There is no existing wall, they're going to be putting in three walls, right?
Well, there's no cross conversation, you can direct it to us.
I'm sorry, well, just for clarification, this is why it's problematic for me because I can't even see how high he's going to go, how high or how large these windows are going to be. I mean, it's, it's not sufficient, it's just not sufficient information, but, but over and above. The real reason, I'm not angry, it's a neighbor, I wish he had come and spoke to me. It probably wouldn't have been a problem, and maybe we could have resolved it before, you know, whatever.
The design is not under our purview, that's, that's it, we can only say yes or no to their, their plan, their footprint. But as far as the design and windows and size, like, size of the windows, we have no control, that's the design. As long as they stay within that footprint that we've okayed, that's all we can do. Go ahead, Lenny.
Simply put, if I'm standing on that deck today, or I'm standing in that window six months from now, I'm standing in my same footprints.
You can see, you can see the same thing.
No, no, because now they're moving that wall twelve feet out, closer to my property, okay? Whereas, you know, it's winter time, I mean, they're going to just use it for egress in and out. But now, they're going to be using that as a usable space, so now they're going to be closer to me, and the windows are going to be right there.
But in essence, if you built a three-season porch, your wall would be excellent feet closer to them as well, correct?
If they're standing on the ed, if they're standing on the edge of their current deck, the far, the closest to your house, that's going to be the same as if they were standing on the edge of the room looking out the window.
No, right now, their home has a...
I'm not talking about the home, I'm talking about their deck. If they're standing on the deck...
Okay, if they're, if they're standing on the deck, at the twelve-foot point where they're going to put in the window, that's closer to my home.
If they're standing on the deck, on the edge of the deck, right now, if they took one step towards your house, they'd fall off the deck. So, if they're standing on that edge, that's going to be no closer to your house if they build the wall.
Then the existing, then the existing deck, I know what you're saying. Except now we're talking winter, fall, whereas they, they weren't...
Well, not winter, but they're talking three seasons, so you, yes. Which is essentially what they can use now with their deck.
I don't think they'd be out there right now.
Well, no, but, you know, if they wanted to grill something or...
It's just, it's making the privacy aspect of this, you know, certainly just a lot more loss of it because you're going to have, you know, a place that's heated, I don't know if they're putting heat into it or not.
No, they're saying three seasons, so it's unheated.
But if they want to extend their kit, whatever, I don't, I don't want to get into that because it's, but my concern is that they would be spending more time out there and less privacy for me. I mean, when I go out in the morning to let the dogs out, I might be in my pajamas, I might, you know, and it's just... And I, and I think that for somebody coming along, I just moved into town the day after Thanksgiving last year. And, and I really wasn't looking at that aspect of the house, in fact, I actually was considering taking down my, my storage shed, and I thought, oh gee, maybe I, maybe I better just leave it there. I was just more interested in finding a home, my sister was ill, and I've come back to New England and the whole nine, yeah. So, with that said, it's, it's just an issue of privacy. It would be lovely if, if it wouldn't be too much trouble for them to alter the placement of those windows.
Again, that's not something that we have any control over.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's a design that the owner had, you know, has chosen, it's, we just can't do anything.
As far as the design, you'd have to address that with the owner, and, and, and discuss that with him, but again, you know, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, he isn't, he isn't here, but whatever, okay.
Have you spoken with the owner?
No, I just got this notice, what, Friday, and then the storm, and there's been so much going on, it was the weekend. So...
Maybe if you talk to him, you never know what, what could come out of it, you know?
Well, this gentleman is here, so they can, I guess, take my message back to him. But, you know, it's, I've been very friendly with him, and he has a dog, and he walks them, and, you know, it just, it's, it's just disappointing for me to come, and I don't even have, you know, all of the data and all the dimensions and stuff, and, and see that further, for the loss of privacy.
Well, you understand our position that we can't dictate to him how to design this three-seasons porch or, or anything like that, it's, you know, all we approve is the footprint.
Yeah, I guess I get it. It's a little disappointing, I thought perhaps, you know, you could have some say over the design and...
No, it's just like if you wanted to put something up and your neighbor didn't like it, we couldn't tell you...
So, the, yeah.
Well, I mean, it would be just, just like the chair was saying, it would be like if you were putting something up and your neighbor didn't, I mean, we can't, you know, we can't, we can't tell you how to make a design of your porch or your, I mean, that's not, that's not our privy.
We can't dictate.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't know, it just, you know, he said that he felt that it would, it would certainly improve the value of his property. I've spent, I can't tell you how much, new roof, new coping on my chimney, new doorways, new... So, I have a lot of value put into, a lot of money spent, invested in my property as well. And I think from, from his standpoint, I should think that he would, perhaps these gentlemen can take the message back. It would also, I think, help the value of his home for the privacy, I think most people, when they buy a home, are looking at that kind of thing today. So, the possibility of altering that, that design, I will, I will definitely go and talk with him.
That would probably be your best bet.
I will.
And tell them, you know, how your feelings, your thoughts, your concerns.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Well, I've never been to this forum before, so this is interesting, and I thank you all very much for your time.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And I appreciate it. Do you need anything more from me?
No, we're all set. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you want to? I will close the public hearing at this time, and any further comments from the board?
I would say, I would say if the petition is, if the petition is approved, I would just, to address Lynn's concern, to just take here, just, instead of closed porch, just put porch, I mean, the fact that you're going to enclose sixteen feet of it, I mean, that's, that's the person's option, so if it's approved, just, so there's no, any bigotry or questions, or this doesn't come back in a couple of years if it's approved, so...
Mr. Dwyer, is there anything on our portion that we have to do as far as when we file or anything like that? Or you'll make record of that?
I would just, I would just say, community development probably could make a...
Yeah, I'll make sure it's clear in the decision letter, which then gets sent to the building department.
Thank you, and Brendan will follow up as well, too, if anything we need to do.
All right. So, could I have a motion, please?
Oh, are you three for three tonight?
No, you don't, you don't know.
Motion to approve Turncycle Solutions LLC petitioner and Peter Wyman owner, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-three-by-twelve-foot, and again, I would strike enclosed and just put porch twenty-eight feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required, the parcel is located at Three Dolly Road in the R Residential and Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map six D dash one, lot one-one-nine dash zero one, case two thousand fifteen dash zero four.
Second? Do I hear a second? Lenny is second. Hey, all in favor, say a.
It's actually twenty-three, but it's not what it would be. Oh, I see, I see, all right, so, yeah, actually, can I reach it? So, just put a point of clarification into it, to just, okay, again, approval of Turncycle Solutions LLC petitioner and Peter Wyman owner, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twelve-by-sixteen and seven-by-six, or seven, seven-foot by six-inch by seven-foot deck, twenty-eight feet from the rear property line, whereas twenty, well, whereas forty feet is required, so it'd be a twelve-by-six enclosed porch and a seven-foot by six-inch, seven-foot deck totaling the twenty-three-by-twelve.
Patrick, if you say a twenty-three-by-twelve-foot porch with sixteen-by-twelve feet enclosed, I believe is what you're trying to say.
Okay, so, one more time for the top, and this one is for the record. Turncycle Solutions approval, Turncycle Solutions LLC petitioner and Peter Wyman owner, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-three-by-twelve-foot porch with a twelve-by-sixteen-foot enclosure as part of the porch, from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required, the parcel is located at Three Dolly Road in the R Residential and Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map six D dash one, lot one-one-nine... Conservation Districts, tax map 6D-1, lot 119-01, case number 2015-04, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Lenny seconds.
Maybe one of the three.
Okay, so that's the new verbiage on that one, all right.
Comment?
Go ahead.
If you look at the photo, aerial photo of the neighborhood, the vast majority of every one of these properties is in violation of the code substantially. This house, as stands, not counting the existing deck, is legal, the existing deck is an existing deck, what can I tell you? It's there, how it got there, we don't know, it grew, I guess, but that's beside the point.
It had a previous variance.
I'm sorry, but, you know, it's fair and justifiable.
And there, just for the record, there is a previous variance for their deck.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion, and we finally have a second.
Let's go out, let's get it out.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? 4-0-0.
Just a gentleman, no, 30 days before somebody can come back and make an appeal on this, so proceed at your own risk if you go within the next 30 days.
It's still cold out there.
Aw, come on, that's New Hampshire weather.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is APMK Ventures LLC petitioner, owner, requesting a special exception under section 2.02.C1C of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family residence in the commercial district, the parcel is located at 332 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial in Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map 4D-4, lot 32, case 2015-5. In your name, sir?
My name is Peter McPlintock, I'm the manager with APMK Ventures.
All right, and would you start off with the special ex, would you... Peter, you got the mic on, please? Push the button there, is it bright green now?
I thought it was on.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
It's deceiving, yes, it's good, yeah.
All right, so we're doing the first one, okay, the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use in terms of overall community development, because the use will not alter the character and feel of the area.
All right, I did forget to mention to you that we only have four board members, do you still want to proceed with this, if it's attuned, too?
Well, if it's denied, do I have an, I can come back and appeal, no?
You can request a rehearing.
Right, yeah, okay, I'd like to proceed.
All right, any questions on number one? All right, go ahead.
The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, because there are similar properties in the area, and exterior improvements will enhance the property.
All right, the third one?
There will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, because the residential units are well buffered from abutting properties and parking area, and access onto DW Highway is easy, there are walkways from the parking lot to the unit entrances.
Go ahead.
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, because units will be renovated and updated to current building codes, and there is ample parking with more space available if needed.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Patrick? Lynn?
I'm good.
Can you give me, so what are we looking to do with this, I do have a question, so what are we looking to do with this property, you're looking to subdivide it and build houses, or?
Nope, just convert the, well, the existing property that's there, which was a two-family and an office.
It was a dog grooming.
A dog groomer, yeah, into a two-family, and keep the dog grooming space as just storage.
So you're reverting back to its original?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, good.
Okay, any further questions from the board? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone here who would like to testify for the special exception? Is there anyone who'd like to testify against the special exception?
I'm sorry, I just have to get some clarification.
All right, would you step up here, please?
I think I'm on what you want me to do, I just, okay. I'll sit over here.
Could you just sign in first?
Ah, yes, of course.
Donna, while he's doing that, do we have any stipulations to required parking spaces?
We do, may we go?
Well, while she's looking up, she will, go ahead.
So it's, it's 1.25 per bedroom plus 0.5 per dwelling unit.
All right, go ahead, Pierre.
Okay, so my only concern is, I own 3 Hoyt Street, which is directly behind the building.
You, I'm sorry, you own what?
Uh, 3 Hoyt Street, which is the, the property directly behind, I'm sorry, I'm going to be pretty informal here, but, behind the building that he's looking to renovate, my only concern was that, that commercial unit was going to become another unit, but it's going to just be storage, is my understanding? Okay, then I have no problem, I just didn't want a third unit behind the house, so.
Okay. Donna, what was the, what was the parking again, 1.25 per bedroom?
1.25 per bedroom plus an additional half, 0.5.
Plus another half, okay.
So how many bedrooms is that, what is that?
Five. So we really need seven spaces, which I, I think they have there.
Are you all set? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing right now, and since there's no further questions here, can I hear a motion?
For a sweep, APKM Ventures, motion to approve a special exception under section 2.02.2C1C of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family residence in the commercial district parcel, is located at 332 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial and Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map 4D-4, lot 032, case number 2015-05, I would like to say I am glad to see more, a little more residential space come back into Merrimack, so bringing that back to a two-family, I, I like to see that, so, thank you.
Are you moving? Do I have a second, please? A second, okay.
And I'm pleased to see the property become occupied again, and...
It will be greatly changed.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Anyone against?
4-0-0. Good to see Pete.
All right, and the second variance for APMK Ventures LLC petitioner, owner, requesting a variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family residence with less than the required area frontage, frontage and front, side and rear setbacks, the parcel is located at 332 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial and Aquafire Districts, tax map 4D-4, lot 32, case number 2015-6, and again, if you would start with the points.
All right, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because two-family residences are permitted, are permitted use within the C1 zone, and there are others in the immediate area, the main house was previously used as a two-family prior to going vacant.
All set? All right, go ahead.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed, because the proposed use would not change the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it would allow reasonable use of the property and provide rental housing to the marketplace, property has been vacant for over a year.
Okay, go ahead.
Number four, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished, because the character of the building will not change, and the planned improvements will enhance the value of the property and surrounding homes.
And the last one?
Five, number one, no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and specific application of the provision to the property, because any use for the existing property in C1 would require variances.
All right, and the first part?
Number two, the proposed use is of reason one, because they would allow continued use of the property as a residential use with significant improvements.
All right, thank you. Lynn?
Come on, sit.
Patrick? Lenny? All right, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone here who would like to testify for the special exception, excuse me, the variance? Anyone who would like to testify against it?
Want to come up and talk again?
Close the public hearing? Any last comments? Go to it.
Yes, for the win, A, APK, APMK Ventures LLC, approval variance under section 3, section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family residence with less than required area frontage and front, side and rear setbacks, the parcel is located at 332 Daniel Webster Highway, in the C1 Limited Commercial and Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map 4D-4, lot 032, case number 2015-06, do I have a second?
Sure will.
Lenny is the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone against?
4-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to give you a speed.
Well, do you know the 30-day rule, right?
Yes.
I gotta say that.
He's heard me say, he's heard me say it at least three times tonight, so.
Well, yes.
Now it applies, thank you very much, have a good night.
All right, do we have anything at all for any discussion or any other items of concern? And the minutes of December 17th, do I hear a motion, or are there any corrections?
We'll accept the minutes of December 17, 2014.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, a second, I...
Patrick seconds.
That's the one I lost, I don't like that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against?
All in favor.
And one extension?
Why do you vote no?
Let the record show, I showed up tonight even though I abdicated my position.
Okay, may I hear the motion?
Tony's not here, but I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I am in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye.
I said aye, aye.
Oh, I'm sure it's 4-0-0.